All right, let's get started. It is the regular Planning and Zoning Commission meeting scheduled for June 2nd, 2025, and the time is 6:31 PM. All Planning and Zoning Commission members, all seven are present. And that brings us then to item number three on the agenda, which is the introduction and agenda of agenda and format of hearing.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, everyone. First, we will have a call to order, followed by a staff report. Then, the applicant will have an opportunity to make a presentation. Next, the public comments will be opened, and you can state support or opposition. Please state your name and address for the record, and please be brief and to the point within a three-minute timeframe. Afterwards, the commission and staff will have their discussion, and then the commission will vote to recommend approval as presented, approval with conditions, denial of the request, or to table the item. City Council's consideration of tonight's CUPs will be on the Monday, June 23rd, 2025 Moving on to consent, tonight we have excused absences and the approval of the minutes from the May 19 meeting. And then tonight on new business, we have three conditional use permits, one for an auto repair minor, one for an accessory dwelling unit, and one for a dwelling, single-family detached. And then we also have our five-year capital improvement program from 2026 to 2030. And with that, I'll pass it back to you.
Thank you, ma'am. That brings us to item number, Roman numeral four, consent agenda. These items are not voted on, I'm sorry, individually, and are simply routine or administrative in their purpose. So is there anyone wishing to pull an item A or B off of the consent agenda? And do I need to read exactly what they are because it's already been read? No one wishing to pull any item? Then how about a motion and a second for approval, and we'll vote.
Commissioner Haskins' motion. Commissioner Echols' second.
That was Commissioner Haskins with the first and Commissioner Echols with the second. All right. Since we have the motion and a second on the floor, all those in favor, please signify a beration right hand. Measure passes unanimously if I saw Ms. Hendrix raise her hand. Okay. 100% unanimously then. We'll move on then to items removed from the consent agenda. There are none, and so we'll move to new business. Item number one under new business is consideration of possible action. This is a conditional use permit application, CUP 2025-0153. And this is a public hearing, a request from VNDO Holdings LLC, applicant and owner for approval of a conditional use permit or a CUP for auto repair minor use within the general commercial GC district on approximately 9.747... Let me try that again. 9.747 acres of land, the general location being 1855 Cullen Parkway in Pearland, Texas, Suite 309. To begin, how about a motion and a second for approval?
Commissioner McDonald moved to approve.
Commissioner Hendrick's second.
All right. The next item in our script here is the staff report.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, everyone. My name is Patrick Bauer, and I'll be making the request tonight. So the applicant is proposing an auto repair minor facility and a 2,500-square-foot lease space on the subject property. And some of the proposed services include preventative maintenance care for your vehicle, brake replacement, different diagnostic things like electrical, air conditioning, engine performance, suspension repair, and tire repair slash replacement. And there's to be no collision repair or painting with the use. Today's staff has not received any comments in support or against the request as well. So here we get a look at the zoning of the property. As mentioned, it's the general commercial zoning district, and it's surrounded on three sides to the north, south, and west with that Cullen mixed-use zoning district. And then to the east is the suburban residential 12 district, and it's predominantly surrounded on to the north and east by single fam... large lot, single family. There's a church to the south and some undeveloped land to the west. If we were to look at the future land use of the property, it's within the mixed-use center place type. And so just a little bit of history on the property, it was originally annexed into the city in 1998. Buildings were developed on the property from 1991 to 1999, so some buildings were built prior to it even coming into the city, and the site is currently not platted. A little more history on some of the requests that have come before city council. So some previous approvals from city council were for special use permits and for conditional use permits. And the first one for outdoor storage was a SUP, and then the other two are a gym slash health club and a hardware store for CUPs. And then finally, if some of y'all remember, if some of y'all were on P&amp;Z at that time, in 2022, city council approved a zone change for the property from the Cullen mixed-use district to the general commercial district. And additionally, there are also some current code violations that are on the site currently. And so the violations are with the Code Enforcement Department from the Code of Ordinances, and those include but are not limited to unpermitted outdoor storage, unpermitted fencing slash screening, and parking of vehicles and equipment on grass. And staff's recommendation for this request includes conditions related to all the active code violations being resolved, and those are conditions that are to remediate by resolving those prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. And also, there should be a discussion that is encouraged amongst the P&amp;Z whether an additional condition should be considered to potentially include language noting if new violations are issued on the property within six months of approval or issuance of the certificate of occupancy. At the CUP, may need to come back to city council or reconsideration or revocation of the CUP. And so here we get a look at an aerial view of the property. The left-hand image shows the boundaries of the property, and Cullen Parkway is on the bottom of the screen. And so you get a look, there's the front building that's more along Cullen Parkway than a building that's a little more at the back of, or more the middle of the property, but it's behind the other one. And the right-hand image actually shows, if you'll notice where the arrow is pointing, that's actually where the suite 309 is located on the property. So it's in the second building at the back, and it's on the backside of that building. So this, these images kind of give a little better understanding of where that 309 is as well. The left-hand image shows that red outlined is suite 309 on the property, and the floor plan for the lease space is shown on your right-hand side with kind of two bays where cars can be maintained, and then in the corner is an existing office space that would be used. So additionally, looking at kind of auto repair facilities that are existing in the vicinity, there are zero auto repair facilities within one mile. There are 15 within two miles. And then within three miles, which includes those within two miles, of course, there is 29. And it should be noted that this includes anything from your auto repair minor, brake place, oil place, all the way up to more auto repair major or even specialized auto repair facilities. So looking at some of the review criteria, first off, the proposed use is not consistent with the mixed-use center place type. In terms of thoroughfare plan, it's located along Cullen Parkway, which is designated as a major thoroughfare with sufficient width, so it meets that. And then in terms of the UDC, this was a site that was developed prior to the property being annexed into the city, as well as prior to Cullen Parkway being designated as a corridor overlay district. So currently, that is a nonconformity on the site. But it should be noted that the proposed improvements are interior to the lease space, but maybe in the future, if further expansions are wanted, that special exceptions and variances may be needed for any of those future expansions for those nonconformities. And then in terms of utilities, the site is currently served by water, but it does not have access to sewer, as sewer is located to the north at the intersection of McCard Road and Cullen Parkway. And so in terms of the approval criteria for a conditional use permit, as staff mentioned, the requested CUP is not consistent with the future land use plan, specifically that mixed-use center place type, so that's where you see the no there. And then it meets criteria in three and six with some of the conditions added by staff related to the proposed use and kind of how vehicles are to be stored on the site. So while the proposed use is not compatible with the mixed-use center place type, staff finds that the use is consistent with the intent of the general commercial zoning district and the uses that are within the existing buildings on the site. We see different things from a CrossFit gym to kind of appliance repair uses within the site currently. And then while a number of violations do currently exist on the site, staff can be in support of the requested CUP if the violations are remedied prior to a certificate of occupancy being issued for the proposed use. And so therefore, staff recommends approval of the requested conditional use permit with the three conditions which are going to be provided on the next slide. It should be noted that without the conditions included in the recommendation, staff could not support the request. And so the conditions include, one, a certificate of occupancy for the proposed use shall not be issued until all active code enforcement violations are resolved. Two, any additional code enforcement violations that may have been issued from May 2025 to June 2025, prior to the city council public hearing of the site, must be resolved prior to occupancy of the proposed use. And third, vehicles for the proposed use are not permitted to be stored outside of the lease space that are in an inoperable condition, and any vehicle storage shall be within a designated striped space. And that concludes staff's report.
Great report, as always. Thank you, sir. That brings us to the applicant presentation. Is the applicant here, and does the applicant wish to make a presentation? If you'll step on up and state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Nathan Doe, and I pay the property taxes. I fix the problem, so maybe owner is a little bit overrated, but I do represent the ownership. And this is my own buildings. I have been a mechanic for 20 years. I don't do it anymore, but Mr. Jose Chavez, he lost his space recently. And so he came to me, and I'm not doing much with the space except for just personal storage. So he proposed, he proposed that he want to lease the space, so I said, okay, it's not being used very much. Regarding the violations that were mentioned by the staff, I mean, we, I have some equipment Down the street, you know, there's a storage place on Uges Ranch and Cullen with a gravel yard, and, you know, people there charge for storage, outside storage. And on the other corner, Cullen and McCard, there's several businesses, you know, with gravel yards, with outside storage. So I did bring this up with, at the pre-development meetings, and I was told that, you know, outside storage, even though I proposed to do a gravel yards, it was not okay. So that is that. You know, the violation, I have a tenant that moved out last year, and he intentionally called the city and reported all these, you know, supposed violations. And so septic system overflow, when it rained hard, that had already been fixed. The equipment that are there, you know, that's my own equipment. I'm not doing any business or renting out equipment or charge people for storage. And, I mean, other people doing it, you know, and then the city during the pre-development, even though I proposed to do the same, I was told that that was not okay. So if I have to, I mean, just to let the grass grow and watch it grow and not, cannot do anything with it, that's fine, but I don't think, you know, I proposed to screen and proposed to turn the grass area into a gravel yard, but I was told that not possible due to the development code, so, you know, if that's one of the condition that, for you to approve this request, then that'll be fine. Thank you.
Thank you for that. If you're complete, then it brings us to the portion of the script here that person's wishing to speak for or against. Is there anyone here wishing to speak for or against? Seeing no movement, we'll move towards staff, commission, applicant discussions. Who wants to go first?
I think the gentleman explained some of the, I was wondering who was at violation as far as the code violations were, and he explained that he is in violation of it and a past renter of his. I worry about the overloading of the infrastructure. Also, another thing that, that, that I'm concerned with, even if we do put these restrictions on him, I'm, just by what he said, I'm wondering, just to be quite blunt, I'm just wondering how likely he is to comply with what we put out there. I feel like that we'll be back here in six months. I, you know, as far as the places that he mentioned, are they, are they in the ETJ? Or, and if they are in violation, why haven't we done something about that? And, you know, but, but right now, I've got a long ways to get there for a yes vote for me.
I guess I've always looked at code issues like you're pulled over for speeding, and you're running your ticket, and somebody's going faster by you, you know, you can't catch everybody. But still, code, you get what you can get, and a lot of times, when you write somebody a code violation, they send you on to who you're going to write your next ticket to because they're like, well, if I'm, you know, if this is illegal here, what about them? We'll check on them as well, so you fix it or not. No, I hate that it looks like we have a tenant that's kind of caught in this, you know, wants to start a business, is kind of caught in this issue. You have the owner here who's saying he knows about him, he hasn't corrected everything yet. He's been working with staff. So, yeah, I think it's a difficult, especially one like this where we know is already kind of one we keep an eye on. Steph, I would like to ask a question about, because I feel like this is one of the, you know, it's been going on for a while now. I mean, I'm very much about the comp plan, the future land use map, and we're continuing to have these conflicts come up with development where it meets the zoning on the ground, but doesn't meet the future land use map. Is there some point staff's going to propose rezoning to bring the earth into agreement with the future land use map, or is it just out there in case somebody in the future wants to do it?
So this site actually has a fairly interesting back history to it. Previously, this was Cullen mixed-use, in the, in the Cullen mixed-use zoning district, which would have been in compliance with the overlay district and everything that's out there, and with the future land use. Overlay was probably the wrong word there. But the applicant and the property owner at some point rezoned the property, and it is now general commercial. And since that was within recent history, I don't think staff would necessarily revisit this site in particular.
And I understand that. I just, I think, I just feel like quite a few of the CUPs and some of the things we've looked at over the last few months, it's been, there's been some of that conflict. Like, we've adopted this plan, and we're ready, let's start moving forward, and let's look at where we can kind of bring the land and zoning into agreement with the future land use map. Because obviously, people are looking at the zoning map, what's allowed, and that's what they're trying to make their plans on. And so as long as we have that conflict, we're going to get to the other issues. I think, I think it's troublesome, kind of the issues that have been going on, and whether or not everything would be addressed properly. But I would assume these are just, again, I mean, these haven't been to court yet, right? So they're quote-unquote allegations of code violations?
I don't believe that they've gone to court yet, so this is just purely in the notice of violation stage.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
I think this would be an opportunity to, I know this is existing commercial-type use building, but this could be an opportunity for us to add in some type of fencing, like facade, really nice-looking fencing that we do for neighborhoods, just to block what's going on. And the site does not look very good at all. And some landscaping in consideration with allowing this other unit to be rented out. And then also, maybe, there's also, obviously, an issue with the septic, having a septic study done to ensure that whatever's going in there, that it's not going to create further problems for the other renters. So I really wouldn't be on board with this unless we had a septic study that said, hey, this, this is going to work for this, and we had a plan to make this site look a little better, at least along the front. And that would be some type of fence and landscaping. That's it.
And Commissioner Hendrick suggested to help identify some issues that are currently identified. This image that's on the screen right now unfortunately doesn't show the latest fencing that has been installed out there. They have cyclone fencing with that mesh material in front of it, but that does not meet the corridor overlay district and was not a permitted feature to the land.
I think to clarify, we would want something that would meet corridor overlay district type look in landscaping along the front.
Could I jam in just a little? The, as far as I understand it, and I brought this up during the pre-development meetings, this is not a, a permanent development. So I propose to install screen fencing similar to construction site, just so that until there's nothing is going to major happen in this area until the sewer line in front in Cullen are built. So that, what I'm waiting on, and the city, this sewer line in front has been scheduled for construction in 2024, and it pushed back 25, 26, and now the latest is 28. So I'm, I'm just trying to make it work until then. I have planned to build more buildings here, and that is what's holding it up. So, I mean, I'm doing more landscaping, you know, keeping it good-looking from the street. I totally agree with that. And if, if, if I'm allowed to do, you know, just maybe not complying with the overlay district requirement, but something in the interim, so that, you know, I could make use of it, otherwise, you know, it just, it just, we can't do anything with it until the sewer are built.
All right. Let's hear from the next Planning and Zoning Commission member.
What I see here is seven other units, suites, if you will, that are occupied, or six other that's occupied. And if the sewer septic system is not adequately there, are we allowing this to even stay open with the suites that are, that are there with any sewer needs? I'm a hard no right now.
The sewer are replaced with brand-new system, aerobic, aerobic system, brand-new, just completed the second one about three weeks ago.
I guess, you know, as, as Patrick Bauer was giving his discussion points, et cetera, you know, I thought to myself, well, a certificate of occupancy, having these, this criteria for the certificate of occupancy, and then the reach back, the clawback, you know, within six months, punishes the business, the applicant, not the landlord, who's, you know, what we're after. But I get it, you know, through an income approach, you're, we're trying to claw back to the owner. I'm just having a hard time with this one. I mean, I'm hearing us all say, you know, we have some violations, but that's, that's an owner issue when, when we're having a, this is a CUP, right? So, so we can legally consider things that are not zoning per se, right? I've seen the head shake, so I, go ahead.
As I say, I think it's easy to say that unpermitted structures, unpermitted construction, and land uses that are not allowed by the zoning district all relate to land uses with the CUP. So are they directly related to this proposed applicant? No. Is it related to the land? Absolutely. Is it related to the use of the land? Absolutely. Is it related to adhering to the requirements in the UDC? Absolutely. I'm looking at some of my notes, and I only have access to a few notes. There's a new software system that we have that I don't have as much access to, or it's a little bit harder for me to scroll through. But I see violations starting in February of 2024, when members of city departments reached out to legal for help, and we attempted to seek compliance with those things. So no, not relating to suite 309 and the automotive use, absolutely related to Mr. Doe and his uses on the property, or his maintenance of that property. or his maintenance of that property.
And if my, my jamming, all the violation that was brought up has been addressed, well, except for the equipment that, my equipment that are still there. So, I'm trying, I try, I'm trying to work out with the, with the city a solution where I could keep the equipment there, and they are going away. I don't intend to keep them there for, forever, but it will take times.
So, I, I don't pretend to know the uses, and I don't pretend to know the solutions. What I do know is that staff has provided an alternative, if you're so inclined, to let the project go forward, but also gets compliance with those uses, and then through an economic turnaround, the disabling the CUP if it's not sought, and then affecting the tenants, which is harsh to the tenant, but is sometimes the avenue you pursue to seek compliance from the property owner, revocation of that CUP. But it also stops the tenant from actually getting the CO and moving in until we have compliance. Is compliance just parking of equipment on the grass? I don't pretend to know the answer to that question. I heard that it was more than equipment on the grass. I heard that it was outdoor storage, outdoor display of merchandise, which may be that equipment, but it was also the fence that's not compliant with the corridor overlay district requirements. I, I don't pretend to know the status of any of those things. I'm just hearing staff say it's not currently in compliance.
Will you? Go ahead, please.
Could we propose that that he, well, I don't know that we propose it, but we discussed that maybe he has a chance to come back, but he has a layout of having a fence that meets the overlay district, corridor, overlay district, landscaping meets, cleans up the violations, and also has a septic. Whoever did the septic system can, you know, write a letter, study, or anybody like that to say that the septic system is serviceable for all the uses that are there. I mean, yeah, verify, validate, I mean, just have these opportunities to clean up some of these messes and make it look a little bit better. I just think we would, yeah. Just a suggestion.
So, I said, I'm not positive that there is a current septic issue. I, I heard what the applicant said today. And I, I think he's saying that he has fixed the sewer issues, and I assume that that is correct, I don't know, but of course, the city could check on that. I wouldn't recommend that you make that specific finding in your report today, because if it's not an issue, it might not need to be addressed, and we don't want to create an additional burden or anything like that on the applicant. Part of the discussion was he, if I understood it correctly, wants the sewer system to come down to him so he could expand the property 850 feet away, and if he wants to pay for the line, he could do that now. Or, if that's not the issue, then he can wait until the city pulls it in, which means that, you know, new development should pay for new development. I think it's the philosophy that City Council has adopted, not to put that burden on the current taxpayers. So if he wants to get in front of the CIP, he could do that tomorrow and submit a, a infrastructure permit accordingly and extend the line there if, if he needs sewer system to expand the property, if it exceeds the current sanitary sewer, I'm sorry, if it exceeds the current capacity of the septic tank on site.
I'm assuming that the extension of the sanitary sewer line on Cullen is not part of the five-year CIP that were being presented later tonight?
Yes, yes, it is, sir.
Is it?
Well, initially, it was, and it was removed from my understanding. I'm not sure if he had a conversation with our directors.
And later today, at the end of this meeting, there's going to be a workshop for the CIP. You will see this sewer line on there, and it's postponed again until Design 27, Construction 28.
That's, that's pretty long.
Oh, I'm not sure of the timing for that, but as of now, there was, it's not proposed.
I just feel like there's a lot of issues with this site, and we can add a lot of conditions, and we're just going to make it harder for staff to kind of, you know, circle everything up, and I almost feel like it's better to kick it. And when everything's worked out, when the code issues are addressed, when the building meets the requirements, then let's move forward with doing so with the buildings.
So, to clarify, are you suggesting postponing? Are you suggesting, let's vote and then?
Lawrence, if we postpone, I mean, they're going to have to renotice, would they renotice for a future one? Is that staff's typical, I mean, would it save him the reapplication fee if we postpone it?
It saves him the reapplication fee, depending on where we are, because the public hearing portion has been completed.
We could just do it.
If it's six months away, and in the eye of transparency, there may be neighbors, there may be somebody new. Do you want new public hearing? If it takes six long, six months, like, we don't know how long it's going to take to come into compliance. That's within the owner's control. I think that up, postponing it normally, I would say if it's within a month, you don't need it. If it's beyond, I, I don't know where the date is where y'all are comfortable. For the sake of transparency, repost that public hearing. And if that's the case, who should bear the cost of that? Should it be the taxpayers, or should it be Mr. Doe?
Uh-oh, I'm sorry. I would just, I would call the question and, and...
Yeah, I was thinking, I mean, if the gentleman says, the owner says that it's only moving those vehicles and, and the fence is the other issue, only two issues. You know, to me, 60 days gives him time to do that.
And, and I'm still saying I don't pretend to know the issues that are noncompliant on the site.
Right.
If we take Mr. Doe's word for it, those seem like there are things that could be easily resolved. If it's more than that, if it's more intricate than that, maybe not.
I, I, yeah, I mean, I would like, if we, if we postpone it, just suppose if we do it date certain, at any point that we have a code representative here to testify that everything's been met and they're comfortable. I, I just feel like we're even, we're just adding things to it no matter what we do, right? And so, I mean, I, I, I feel for the, the would-be tenant, but at some point, you've got to get the land in, in record status.
I agree with John, Commissioner McDonald. But the one thing that keeps bringing me, everything that we said up here is we get argument back. And if, if he hasn't complied now and hasn't started cleaning things up now, I don't look for it to happen within two or three months. I, I think we need to vote it down, let him reapply once he gets everything in compliance, and then we can move forward with it. But right now, I'm, I'm a hard no, and I'm, I'm not, he hasn't said anything. He's only enforced what I've, what I, I said the first time. He's been very argumentative, coming back with excuses, stuff like that. So, as far as I'm concerned, we need to, we need to call for the vote.
So, here we sit. Does somebody want to make, we need a motion to postpone if that's the case? If not, we need a...
There's already a, a motion to approve that has been seconded. So you could call the question and take a vote on that, unless somebody wants to interject with the motion to postpone.
Three, two, one. All right. We have a motion and a second on the floor without a motion to postpone. So, all those in favor of this CUP number? My apologies. Oh, it was at the top, CUP 2025-0153. All, we did not discuss, never mind, we probably won't need to. All those in favor, please signify, bring your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Sorry, 07 vote. All right, that brings us to item two. And item two is a consideration possible action, the conditional use permit application, CUP 2025-0159. And this is a request by John Hannah, applicant on behalf of, there's no way I'm going to say this name correctly, Blake. Can somebody help me? Sorry? Mendelk? For approval of a conditional use permit, a CUP, for an accessory dwelling unit within the single-family residential or R1 district on approximately two acres of land, and the general location being 2644 Miller Ranch Road in Pearland, Texas. Would entertain a motion and a second for approval.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Mr. Haskins? You good? Okay, staff, please. Presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Katie Peterson. I am presenting this request tonight. This is a request for an accessory dwelling unit within an existing accessory structure. Currently, the structure is 1,258 square feet, and there is an approved building permit for a 108 square foot addition to the left side, the addition of a new porch, a new porch cover over an existing slab at the rear, and then an internal remodel. At this time, the remodel does not include a kitchen, but that is what the intent is, and that would trigger the conditional use permit as once a kitchen is added, that gives them the bathroom, sleeping, and kitchen facilities, which classify it, it would classify as a dwelling unit. So right now, it's a guest room or a, an accessory, a room within an accessory structure, but it is not a full dwelling unit, and their intent is to turn it into a dwelling unit. So that's why the CUP is required tonight. We have not received any public comment for or against this application. The property was noticed. You can see here the aerial and zoning map. It is zoned R1 to the north, west, and south, and part of the east of the project. It is zoned R3 to a small portion to the east, and then GC to a portion of the east as well. The future land use map identifies this area as open space, natural areas, and outdoor tourism. And you can see that that's on the north, south, and east as well, with traditional residential across the street. Currently, the site is a residential unit with an accessory structure. To the south, there's a larger lot, single-family residential, larger lot, single-family residential across into the south, and there's some commercial right under the word "traditional residential" on your screen there, and then the traditional residential neighborhood there to the south. This site was developed as a single-family residence in 1995. It was then annexed into the city in 1998. The accessory structure which we're speaking about tonight was built in 2012, and the site was platted in 2020. The building permit for the expansion and the renovation of this accessory structure, along with some other work on the site, was issued in 2025, just a couple of months ago. So you can see here, circled in red, the red is larger than the footprint of what is being touched, but I wanted to make sure it was all within it. So, the existing structure is seen in the aerial here, and what is proposed includes the addition of the new porch, which is right here, the small 108 square foot addition right here, covering this existing slab with a porch cover, but it will still be an exterior porch, it's not an enclosed space, it's a covered space. And then the remodel of the interior to add some walls and some other facilities in there. Because the future land use map identifies this as a natural area or outdoor tourism, it is not compatible with the future land use map. However, it is compatible with the character of the existing neighborhood, the existing use for the site, and it is a larger lot residential use there. The future land use map identifies this, along with the large pond to the north of this, as those outdoor areas. And so this is the, the transition area between that traditional residential area and the outdoor tourism to the, the north of this. It does have frontage along Miller Ranch Road, which is a major collective to be widened. The right-of-way dedication took place during the plating in 2020. It will need to be in compliance with the Unified Development Code. This already has that building permit, and it does meet the requirements of the UDC for the R1 zoning district. So it's meeting the setbacks and the other requirements. The only thing that triggers this to have to have the CUP associated with it for the work that is currently being proposed is the addition of that kitchen, full kitchen, which creates the dwelling unit. So the structure could exist in its current, currently permitted state with the addition of the 108 square feet as a guest room or, or a bonus room detached from the house. And then the final one is that it does have access to water and sewer. So again, with the criteria that are found for the conditional use permit, as I just mentioned, it is not compliant with the future land use plan and comprehensive plan. However, it is consistent with all of the other criteria which are found in this. Staff finds that the proposed ADU use meets the established criteria for approval, except for that designation on the future land use map, but as it's not changing the character of the existing surrounding traditional residential neighborhood, and it is supporting the character of the primary use on the property, staff recommends approval of the requested CUP for the accessory dwelling unit within the R1 district with the following condition, that the CUP only allow for the accessory dwelling unit to be occupied by a person or persons related to the person who occupies the primary dwelling unit on the subject property. This condition is one that we have had placed on many of the ADUs that have come forward before this commission and council in the previous months. And that concludes staff report.
Great report, as always. Thank you. Is the applicant here? I'm assuming, since you knew your, how to say your last name. And if you'd like to make a, a presentation, this is your time.
Yes, my name's Blake Schmadauka. I'm the property owner of 2644 Miller Ranch Road. This is a property we purchased 10-plus years ago, and we have remodeled the main house. And the guest house that we have on the property is getting in poor shape. So our plan is to remodel it, you know, add some interior walls, enhance the value of that piece, of that structure, and hopefully use it for family uses whenever our mother-in-laws come or relatives come. So, we're just trying to really enhance the property. My wife is really big on putting a oven in there so that as we do have relatives stay there, or if our mother, my mother or my mother-in-law, you know, gets to bad shape, we could actually have her live there, and there is an extra room for a caretaker. Hopefully, add a little bit of color to what we're trying to do, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. This isn't a, a time that we can dialogue, it'll be in the next section. But whenever, not hurrying you, whenever you're done, we'll move, move on to it.
So, that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you for that. Appreciate it. The next portion of our script is any persons wishing to speak for or against. Seeing no movement, then we get to staff, commission, applicant discussion. Commissioners, who wants to go first?
Oh, I think this is a good use, expansion. I'm glad that right now Senate Bill 673 seems to have died the legislature, which would have taken away these ability to regulate accessory dwelling units. And I think this is, you know, historically the kind of lot we've seen this done, so I appreciate, thank you. I would, I would ask, again, I know we've looked at, we've asked about CUPs in the past, and once we see a lot about, is there a way? I mean, I feel like most, every CUP for accessory dwelling units for family members and these sort of lots, we approve. So can we just set up our typical conditions and what we think works for that and pass it so that, you know, an individual like our applicant here can just, if they meet these criteria, there can always be a secondary escape to P and Z for whatever reason, but I feel like it's just one of those things that we could probably make it a little easier along the way. But I'm in support of the application.
Were you asking for those conditions to be tied to this particular application?
And I, I guess I'll go ahead and, and make the motion to amend. And I guess I'll go ahead and make the motion to amend based on the recommendation of the staff, that the accessory dwelling unit be limited to occupation by a person who's related to the person who occupies a primary dwelling.
I'd be happy to second that. I guess I'd want to make sure we understand what "related" means, and I'm assuming the city is, has that verbiage or that definition, so we can just reflect that it's part of the definition of their.
I don't think we have a specific definition, but if you wanted to say "related by blood" or "continguinity," or, what did they say, marriage, or, "marriage or blood," affinity or "continguinity" would be it. What level? Absolutely, you could do that. Right now, we're just saying "related."
Well, I don't want to change the motion, so I will second Commissioner McDonald's motion to amend.
So, one of the newer guys has a question. How do we enforce that, since we've apparently done this before?
So, what I would suggest is that the enforcement comes after, as with most code enforcement, it's going to be complaint-driven, and when we get a complaint about whomever living there doing whatever they do, that's when we will go out and check that. There's not, theoretically, you could establish an annual affidavit program so that it's less, we don't have that right now. You could do inspections or permits, or you can create a different regulatory scheme, but because at the end of the day, it would be a code enforcement issue, even though it's in the zoning context, almost always, those are going to be reactive based on a complaint that comes in.
At some point, some tenant gets upset and reports the fact that they weren't supposed to be living there.
Well, I could see how, in a, in a possible different configuration on a different lot, that would be, I guess, easily stepped aside, seeing the, how the entrance to the property and where the home is, I doubt very seriously that strangers, for lack of a better word, would be welcome, you know, to rent out the property, just, just from my glance, but thank you, I appreciate that.
Speaking of the motion, my question is related to the motion, which, if in fact, in this day and time, properties change ownerships from time to time, how would this approval be intertwined in the replacement of the deed or exchanging of the deed when the property is sold to maintain the same approval? Because once it's sold, we're, we'll be giving this family the approval. Once it's sold, that approval then is none in void, so.
It's not going to affect the deed, we're not going to change anything in the title or in the deed. It would be something that runs with the land, the permit stays with the property. So, the new owner, when they come in, would have to only allow related, people related to the primary residence, to the primary dwelling unit. So, they could have a mother-in-law suite, they could have a father-in-law suite, they can have a teen suite. As far as the city's concerned, that's not going to be something, but if they, we see advertisements for it rent, if complaints come in because there's an advertisement for rent, and one of those property owners along the area says something, if it comes in as a complaint, if they come in for, if the new owner buys it, and they don't want it to have a, to be on their meter, on their electric meter, and they come in for a new electric meter, meter just for that back building, that's how the city typically learns about something of this nature. Or, as in this case, if he comes in to make a application for a new permit, you know, and we see that, and, hey, what's going on here? That's, that would be another way that we see it, which is how this one came to attention. And, of course, he's doing the right thing and coming in and applying for the CUP as requested, and that's, that's why we're here.
We have a motion and a sec, I'm sorry, we have a motion to amend, so we should vote on that first, and then we can have more discussion or vote on the original motion amended. So, let's vote on the amendment, the motion to amend. Everybody clear on that one? All right, all those in favor, please signify by raising right hand. That's six of us, and all those opposed, same sign. Did you vote? Okay, that measure passes six to zero, one abstention. Commissioner Echols? And then that gets us to further comments, discussions, or we look pretty done? All right, so, the amended motion is now being voted on. All those in favor, please signify by raising right hand. Measure passes, all those opposed, same sign. Measure passes six to one. For the record, when we have a minority, your vote, you're allowed to state why, if you wish. So, council hears it. Let's see.
The reason why I'm voting no is because, number one, to police it, it's very obscured, and the second reason is, is this would not even came to us if he hadn't got caught before. He, he came in to do the right thing. He's doing the right thing now because he got caught trying to do it on his own.
Mr. Echols, I don't want to be dis, I don't want to disagree with you. I don't know if it's a caught situation. I think he came in for a building permit because he wanted to do this, and as soon as he came in for the building permit, the said, the city said, "You need to go through this process first." It's not like it was a code enforcement case where we saw something happening, it's not like it was permit, illegal work without a permit activity. I just want to be careful if we say somebody got caught. When I think of that, I think that their hand was three-quarters of the way in or coming out of the cookie jar.
Okay, my, my apologies there, because what I was hearing was he came after he was told he needed to come.
And I, I want a clarification, I think that's true, but he was going through the process of permitting when he was informed, "By the way, this triggers this, so you need to go through this process." I'm seeing the headshot.
Well, I was transparent the whole time that there was going to be a range, and I was asking for it.
No, that's a beautiful house you have over there, so.
But I would just point out, too, that I think, as far as ADUs got in the state legislature this summer or the spring, I don't, I don't think it's going to be that much longer before the state's going to make whatever size cities and, and whatever that is, Pearland will be in ones required, and they don't care about zoning, they don't care about a lot of stuff, it's based as the rules written. Municipalities may pass no law prohibiting accessory dwelling units. And so, I think, I think they're going to come, so I think it's about preparing, I think, you know, getting the right rules in place that, that give us some protection before, before it comes, and I think a lot of our lot coverages are going to cover that because those will still be in play, but we're going to see accessory dwelling units starting to pop up, especially in a larger lot.
And this is a two-acre site, so for me, it fits on there, it makes sense. If you were, had neighbors creeping in on you, you know, we might have an issue, maybe there would be. Thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate you doing the right thing. All right, that brings us to item number three, and this is a conditional, additional consideration of possible action, Condition Use Permit, CUP 2025-0182. And this is a request by VHR Construction LLC, applicant and owners, for approval of a Condition Use Permit, CUP, for dwelling, a single-family detached use on approximately 0.143 acres or 6,250 square feet, excuse me, of land within the Old Town Mixed Use District, OT-MU District. The general location being 2225 North Houston Avenue, Pearland Parkway. How about a motion and a second for approval?
Commissioner Haskins, motion to approve.
Commissioner Henry, second.
That brings us to staff report.
Good evening again, Commissioners. Again, my name is Katie Peterson, and I am presenting this report. This is a Conditional Use Permit to allow for a single-family detached structure on approximately .143 acres of land. It's in the Old Town Mixed Use District, which is why it requires a CUP. It's located at 2225 North Houston Avenue. This may sound familiar, as you've heard a handful of these on the same street in, in recent years. We have noticed the property, and we have not heard any public comment for or against the request. The property is located here, which is surrounded on all four sides by Old Town Mixed Use, and across the North Houston, facing Main Street there, fronting Main, it transitions to the Old Town General Business Zoning District. So, it is surrounded on all four sides by this Old Town Mixed Use Zoning District. For the future land use map, it identifies this space as a mixed-use center, which goes for approximately a block north, south, east, and west of the property, and then beyond that is surrounded by compact residential, public use to the south, there's that little chunk of parks and open space, and then commercial center as you get towards the Main Street corridor there. There was a single-family residence that was built here in 1945. It was annexed into the city after that, which was in 1959. The residence was demolished last year. The property is not yet platted. They are aware of the plating requirement for the site and have started to discuss that process. We have not yet received the application, but it is coming forth. Here is a picture of the existing conditions as of this morning. So, you can see this is where the, the structure used to sit. These two structures here are both single-family residential to the north of the property. These came in through this conditional use permit process a few years ago. As I identified in the staff report, the future land use map does identify this area as the mixed-use center, which does not directly align with the proposed use for this site. Well, it does not directly align with this, it does identify this area as mixed use, which would include condos or live-work-type units. Our code currently doesn't have anything that speaks specifically to the live-work unit combination, but does speak to the combination of the area. So, while it does not directly call out a single-family residential in the future land use place type for mixed-use center, staff believes this does meet the intent of the area that they have highlighted on the map here with these small lot residential nestled in between the commercial nodes where it will still be a walkable live-work type unit. So, this is, it does not technically meet the comprehensive plan, and we have identified it as such, but there is a small caveat to that one as well. The thoroughfare plan, it fronts Houston Avenue, which is a local residential street. It is, it will have to meet the Old Town Mixed Use Zoning District code requirements as it comes in for the development, and it has access to water and sewer. There's water along North Houston and sewer along the alley to the rear of the property. Again, with the criteria for the conditional use permit, it is not consistent with the comprehensive plans, future land use map, however, it is consistent with all of the other criteria found in our Unified Development Code. Staff finds that the single-family detached dwelling meets the established criteria, thoroughfare, thoroughfare plan, and the surrounding uses, and while it is not fully aligned with the designation on the FLU, it does propose a small lot residential, which is the existing character of the neighborhood surrounding it, and staff recommends approval of the requested CUP. Go in staff report.
Thank you, ma'am. Is the applicant here, and does the applicant wish to make a presentation? Name and address for the record would be great to start off with, thanks.
Hello, good afternoon. Oh, she going to?
Going to translate for him.
Yes.
It's your name? Eduardo? His name is Eduardo Rodriguez.
Victor.
Victor Rodriguez. We have a company that is construction for residential homes. Yeah, we have that property to construct a new residential house to later on. It's for business to later on sell it to someone who will live there however long they want.
Yeah, normally, we, we do construction. My brother and I, we are builders, so we, we, we buy properties and we build new, new houses to, to for sale. So, I don't know if he, if he, she got any sample for the house we want to build in there, but it's like regular house, three bedrooms, two bathrooms, and yeah, so I think that's it.
That, that mean out of all?
For us, yes, I don't know if he, you got any question?
Well, then we'll.
You can speak English, that's fine.
Okay. We, this section is for you to present, and then we go to questions in a little while.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so that brings us to persons wishing to speak for or against. Is anyone, is anyone out there wishing to speak for or against? Not seeing any movement, we'll go to staff, commission, applicant discussion.
I would like to see, or, EDC change. This was a house that understood under Burrow, tree fell and demolished the house, and they had to tear the house down. And now, they're wanting, whether it be the same owner or different owner, someone else is wanting to, to build another house similar to the one that was destroyed, and now they're having to jump through hoops to get the okay to build the house. I, I think we, as, as P&amp;Z Commission, as well as our council, we need to have an easy stream for something that was storm-related, tore down, to be able to put back without having to jump through all the hoops that we're having to jump through tonight and with a CUP. And I understand in conversing with one staff that it's primarily because of mixed use. If we can make a change in the EDC, I would like to do that, make it easier on our citizens to be able to rebuild something that was destroyed by a storm. So, I'll just go on record there, I'm for this.
Could I add to that? I guess I would have, I was thinking the same exact thing. For me, it's a use that is desired, it wasn't a non-conforming use, in my opinion, because the majority of the, of the areas there are single-family homes or small businesses, haircut facilities, those kind of things. So, it, it kind of seems detrimental to staff time, to applicant time. And I see you're shaking your head, so if we're, we're in the, we're in the middle of a UDC rewrite or edit, it might be a good time to address this, because I don't think that was ever the intent when we did the comp plan, to change it to where these single-family uses were non-conforming in case, and I think that old rule of, if it's greater than 50% of the values destroyed, you know, you've, and you've got to rebuild or what have you, the rule kicks in. I don't think that was ever the intent of anybody on the, on the, on the Comprehensive Plan Committee, nor any of the planning and zoning members that attended those meetings, so, or even the, the authors of it, but somehow that happened, and Martin's ready to say something. Mr. Griggs.
Thank you, Chair. These are things that, you know, we've noticed, and we'll take a look at them through the UDC rewrite.
You could have stopped me about three minutes ago.
I agree with Commissioner Fuentes, the, you know, I've, I've been pretty hard as far as looking at the comprehensive plan, and, and I, you know, I've asked the question if, if. if, you know, why did we have a plan if we're going to change it all the time? But then we come up against something like this and and, you know, it it makes me rethink. That maybe is it, it's not written in stone, that we have a purpose and maybe this is one of those purposes is to allow somebody to build something back that they had before. Especially when you have houses all over the, next door and in front of them and everything else. So I'm going to be a definitely yes on this too.
Commissioner Henry, some a yes on this.
Nothing further and I'm looking around and everybody's saying nothing from me. So let's, let's take a vote. All those in favor, please signify, raise your right hand. Measure passes seven zero.
Thank you very much.
The next very short item is consideration and possible action, the five-year capital improvement program two zero two six dash two zero three zero. Public hearing by the City of Pearland, five-year capital improvement program. Been developed in order to further city commitment to the citizens of Pearland by working to meet today's needs as well as those in the future. The development of the CIP is a continuous process and hence should be viewed as a working document. While the program includes five-year planning, every year staff works closely with various departments to update the program in order to accommodate new projects and reflect changing needs. P and Z dash zero seven nine five agenda report. It is, it did say discussion and possible action.
The consideration and possible action is in the top of the line.
We need a, and I did read that. So we we did, we do need a motion for approval in a second.
Commissioner Echols, move.
Commissioner Haskins, second.
All right. Is this a public hearing? It is. Yes. So we need to follow the script there. So it's time for staff report.
Yes. Okay. Good evening Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm Fabiola Di Carvallo, Assistant Director of Capital Projects with the Engineering and Public Works Department. This evening, I will present the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-six through twenty thirty capital improvement program according to our city charter. After the presentation, the commission is expected to submit a recommendation for capital improvement program in accordance with section seven subsection zero one, paragraph D six of the city charter to be considered by city council. According to the City of Pearland City Charter, the power and duties of the Planning and Zoning Commission reads as follows. The commission shall have the power and shall be required to submit annually to the city manager not less than ninety days prior to the beginning of the budget year, a list of recommendations of capital projects which, in the opinion of the commission, are necessary, necessary or desirable to be constructed during the forthcoming five years. Such list shall be arranged in order of preference with recommendations as to which project shall be constructed in which year. We have a lot to cover in this presentation and here's a summary of what we'll be covering. We will open up for discussions and questions at the end. As we are all familiar with the strategic priorities set by city council where it explains why, what and how we do what we do, the base of what we do is developed through a trusted government and resilient finances by providing a safety, a safe community, a strong economy, sustainable infrastructure and connected community, making City of Pearland a community of choice for over a hundred and thirty thousand people and many businesses. The creation of the five-year capital improvement program or CIP is an in-depth, year-long process involving every department within the city. The fiscal year twenty-five through twenty-nine CIP was finalized in September of twenty twenty-four. The planning process for the fiscal year twenty-six CIP was initiated in October of twenty twenty-four. Currently, we are in the third quarter of the CIP process. Staff has reviewed and finalized project scopes and verifying funding options prior to presenting the proposed CIP to the Planning and Zoning Commission today. And ultimately will be presenting to council for consideration and adoption. City of Pearland's capital improvement program is developed to further the city's commitment to our citizens. This program works to meet today's infrastructure needs as well as those of the future. From working on underground infrastructure like water and wastewater lines to more visible projects such as the Berry Rose Water Reclamation Facility Expansion and Decommissioning project or major roadway projects. The five-year CIP addresses the needs of the city through responsible city government and a comprehensive approach that ensures efficient use of public funds. CIP is a long-range plan that identifies capital projects, provides a planning schedule and identifies options for financing the plan. The program provides a link between the city's comprehensive plan, various master plans, the annual budget and the five-year financial forecast. The process of developing a CIP should solidify the support of the citizens of Pearland and the city's commitment to carrying out these programs. This is the City of Pearland, the community of choice. Commissioners, this is the CIP update series calendar. Presentation started in October of twenty-four with parks and facilities and ended in March with a transportation and drainage. The CIP workshop related to the proposed fiscal year twenty-six budget will take place on June, on June twenty-third. The CIP update series will resume in October of twenty twenty-five with updates on parks and facilities related projects. The future CIP update series presentation dates have not been set yet, but we will invite you once again to each of these presentations. The CIP update series presentation provides updates on current and future projects. We will now dive into the city's capital improvement projects. Before we start with the future CIP projects, I would like to provide you with a glance of the current project phases. As you can see on this slide, we currently have forty projects in design. Not all, but most of them have a construction phase. We also have nineteen projects currently in construction and twelve projects that have not started. For the projects that have not started, most are in the process of selecting a consultant or in contract negotiations. In summary, we have approximately eighty projects that are either in design, construction or during the bid phase, which means they start, they will start construction soon. And here's an overall look on the funding per each category for current fiscal year twenty-five on the left side. And on the right side, the planned five-year CIP from fiscal year twenty-five through twenty-nine, which we started in October of twenty twenty-four. Commissioners, this slide represents the overall five-year CIP program per each category for fiscal year twenty-six through thirty. There are, there were a total of two hundred and thirty-five capital requests. A hundred and eighty capital requests were included in the fiscal year twenty-six through the thirty. Within the hundred eighty capital projects, there are twenty-seven drainage projects, eighteen facilities, nine parks, nineteen streets, forty-nine wastewater projects and thirty-seven water line projects, making a total of a hundred and fifty-two capital projects within the fiscal year twenty-six through thirty. This does not include some of the current projects. This slides provides a better perspective on the project totals of the fiscal year per each category. As you can see, drainage is the category with the largest budget with approximately fifty-six million, which means thirty percent of the overall budget. This total includes thirteen drainage projects we are proposing budgets for the approved for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-six, either for design or construction phase. After drainage, the next largest budget is the wastewater with approximately twenty-five percent of the budget. The facilities category has the smallest proposed budget, which represents approximately two percent. The streets category, which also includes traffic, has the second smallest budget compared with the other categories with approximately six percent of the budget. We'll now start with the drainage category. There are twenty-seven capital improvement projects included in the fiscal year twenty-six through thirty budget. This total includes projects that began in prior fiscal years and are continuing through fiscal year twenty-six in either design or construction phase. Of the twenty-seven projects, seven are scheduled to begin the design phase and one will start the study phase in twenty-six, while five are anticipated to begin construction during the fiscal year twenty-six. In front of you is a list of the projects approved in the fiscal year, I'm sorry, approved in the twenty twenty-three geobond that will start in fiscal year twenty-six. I also included other projects such as the master drainage plan update and the Hatfield Road South Drainage Projects, which have other funding sources that includes PEDC and certificate of obligations and et cetera. And the following are the project budgets for the drainage projects to start design in fiscal year twenty-six. All the projects listed here have proposed budgets to start design in fiscal year twenty-six if approved by council. You will notice that some of the projects, even though we're starting design in fiscal year twenty-six, additional capital projects are listed on this slide. For example, the Fight Road Drainage Improvements Project has not only the proposed budgets for fiscal year twenty-six, but also proposed budgets for fiscal year twenty-seven for construction. This way, you can see all the budgets for a project altogether as opposed to duplicating on other slides. As you can see, budget being proposed for the design is one million three hundred and forty-five thousand. Commissioners, you received a packet that has additional information for each project, which includes all this information in addition to a description of the project, the reason that the project is needed and funding sources per year. And it has been organized by project category so you can follow along. The master plan drainage plan update is proposed to start in fiscal year twenty-six. The Harkey Road Drainage Project will also be starting design in fiscal year twenty-six and construction is planned for fiscal year twenty-seven. On these slides, we have the following projects. Iron Hollow Drainage Improvement, Isla Drive North Galveston, Sherrill Drive Drainage Improvements, East Plum Drainage. Again, all these projects will start design in fiscal year twenty-six and the proposed budgets are listed. And I'll provide a little bit more detail on some of these projects. Here additional CIP drainage projects, Hatfield Road Drainage and Hatfield South Road South Drainage to start design in fiscal year twenty-six with council approval. With that, this makes seven projects that will start design in fiscal year twenty-six and one study. Among the projects we are proposing to start design in fiscal year twenty-six, I would like to highlight the Fight Road Drainage Improvements Project. The project includes drainage system improvements from Cullen Parkway to Harkey along Fight Road and from Fight Road intersection to Mary's Creek along FM eleven eight twenty-eight. Because of the planning improvements on FM eleven twenty-eight by text dots, will address the drainage issues along FM eleven eight twenty-eight, the city thought it would be best to wait for the text dots improvement to be completed so not to create bottleneck effect if city's planning improvements were completed before. In addition, the city's project will then be limited to Fight Road Drainage System Improvements. The yellow planned, the yellow line depicted on the figure identify the work limits this project will resume to after text dots improvements. The red dotted line was the original limits of the work of this project. With text dots improvements, the scope and cost will be significantly reduced. Regarding the schedule update on text dots project, they had the design kickoff meeting in early twenty twenty-four. We received an update in May that the project's now on hold until some discrepancies in the survey are resolved. So the lead day is unknown at this time. Another project I would like to highlight is the Isla Drive North Galveston Sherrill Drive Drainage Improvements. This project will include the removal of the existing concrete road, asphalt roadway pavement, roadside ditches and replacement concrete carbon gutter roadway with underground storm sewers. The design is proposed to start in fiscal year twenty-six followed by construction in twenty-seven. The following slides will provide information on projects we are asking for your consideration and proposed budgets to start construction in fiscal year twenty-six. We have five drainage projects that are pending budget approval to start construction phase. Commissioners, for clarification, we have way more drainage products that will start construction in fiscal year twenty-six. But since their capital costs have been funded already, they are not listed here. And here are the drainage projects with their proposed budgets and plan to start construction in fiscal year twenty-six if budgets are approved. Some of the projects on these slides have been combined with other projects to better locate resources and better project management like the Southwest Quadrant of Old Town and Shady Crest and Creekview Drainage Projects, which have been combined with other projects, which I'll explain on the next slides. Here's another project that has proposed construction budget for fiscal year twenty-six if approved. This project has also been combined with other drainage projects and all have GLO funding, grant funding. The budget being recommended here is for the construction of the Gardner Acres subdivision drainage improvements. On the projects we are proposing construction budget for fiscal year twenty-six, I would like to highlight the Southwest Quadrant of Old Town, which is also a twenty twenty-three geobond project. This project will provide drainage improvements in the area between Broadway, Walnut and the railroad tracks. And as mentioned previously, this project was combined with the water project so we can construct projects, these projects at the same time. The project scope will include removal and replacement of driveway sidewalks and driveway coverts and regrading of roadside ditches. The design started in July of twenty twenty-four and design is approaching ninety percent completion. Construction is estimated to start between November and December of this year and be completed within approximately fourteen months. Shady Crest and Creekview Subdivision Drainage Improvements, which will provide drainage improvements in the Shady Crest and Creekview subdivisions. The Shady Crest subdivision portion of this project is being funded by the twenty twenty-three geobond. The project scope includes removal and replacement of driveways, sidewalks and driveway coverts and regrading of roadside ditches. This project also includes mule overlay of the existing asphalt pavement within the project limits. The design is started in July of twenty twenty-four and design is approaching sixty percent completion. Construction is estimated to start between June and July of twenty twenty-six.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, are, are we going to go through all ninety-eight slides?
Yes.
I don't know, I just feel like it's just this load of data being dumped on us. You know, are you just highlighting the ones in next year's plan with this?
Yes, there's, there's some.
Because if we had gotten your presentation of what you're actually reading on, on Friday when we got the packet, then we would have a little bit better understanding of, of what we're listening to. And how many, how many projects are in the CUP? This total CUP, how many, how many projects are in there?
Those are a hundred and fifty-two capital projects.
For the full five years?
Yes.
And then how many, how many dollars is that? How many dollars is the total CIP?
It's about a hundred and seventy million, a hundred, no, almost like five hundred, what is it, seven hundred million or five hundred million?
I just want to kind of jump to the chase here, right? I mean, it's kind of the same question I had last year, which is the, the code says, as she read from before, this commission shall submit annually to the city manager a list of recommendations. I'm assuming they're supposed to be our recommendations. But this is the first time that we've seen the list, right? This is the first time that projects have been shared with the commission, right? So we are hundred and twenty days out of the start of new budget. And there were four workshops throughout the year that we're invited to. But it's really contingent on the commission going out and above to learn about the CIP and not staff coming to the commission to share with the CIP, right? So you want us to take what was probably just over seventy-two hours and look at four hundred and sixty-eight pages with a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty projects for whatever, a hundred and fifty million dollars. And, and after a twenty-minute, ninety-page PowerPoint be okay, right? I mean, it's.
Or make recommendations for anything.
I mean, it's, it's just ludicrous what we're being asked to do here for the second year in a row. You know, it's, it's why, I just don't understand what we're doing, right? When, when, in your CIP, I don't see any listing of where the funding's coming from. You, you brought, you mentioned it a couple of times on your slides, but how much of these projects are bond? How much are cash? How much are revenue? How much are grants, right? When I look at the list, I don't see a breakdown on that. We don't know how much money we're spending and where it's coming from. Is there projections or are any of these future debt? Possibilities, debt projects, are we gonna, are we looking at possibly setting up future bond elections?
Yes, and there are some projects listed on the presentation that we.
In the presentation, you mentioned G L O or whatever, but if you actually look at the C I P, there's no, we're not seeing where the money's coming from, right? So how do you have a C I P project or plan without knowing where the money comes from? I don't know, I'm, I just, you know, I mean, it's like, let's just approve it and move on then. I mean, if this is what's being asked for us, if that's all they want from us, if that's what it was last year, that's what it is this year. I mean, there's no true opportunity for this commission to participate in this process. At no point do they come to us and share the information or whether, they're working on this all year long, obviously. And I'll tell you, some of these, some of these C I P workshops really get more into why I need more staff to do these projects than actual projects, right? So, but the, the information we're getting, I mean, it shows on our little, you know, four quarter thing, third quarter, P and Z, first time P and Z is mentioned, third quarter. Prove our plan, let's go to, let's take it to council. I mean, I would assume council wants us to do our job. But, I don't know, I mean, we can sit here and go through the motions and listen to sixty more pages of slides at a, at a pace that, I mean, I'm sorry. I mean, I think even Jennifer who lives this is getting a little bit glazed over, you know?
Can I just ask one question? Is there any specific project which you have not seen where the funding's coming from?
I mean, I did, I looked at the list, I didn't see, usually you have, I mean, what I'm used to at C I P is this is the year, this is the project, this is where we estimate funding's gonna come from. But we know going forward.
Where the, where the shortfall may be, how it may, how may it be brought up, what's potentially bond.
It's, it's, it's on the packet.
Well, we just got the packet Friday afternoon evening.
Okay.
How long have you been working on this? How long have you, has staff been working on the C I P for this next year?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
How long has staff been working on this plan?
That's since October twenty four.
Okay. How many times has, has the public works staff come to planning and zoning and updated them on the progress?
Uh, we, the public works.
How many times you come to the Planning and Zoning Commission and updated them on the progress of the plan or?
To my knowledge, there were four times that we have predicted with the C I P.
You had workshops, but at no point did you ever come to the commission? At no point did your staff ever sit in one of these meetings and say, hey, let's talk about drains today. This is what we're looking at for next year. Let's talk about parks. Let's talk about facilities. Let's talk about funding.
So are you saying that besides the C I P updated series, where we invited you guys, we want an additional meeting just for the planning?
I mean, is this, is this, is the job of the commission to submit a recommendation?
Yes.
And, and you really think, honestly, that this, this commission getting this list, this four hundred page plan Friday afternoon, and then this presentation you're going through, that we are adequately schooled in the contents of the C I P to make a coherent and educated recommendation to our city council? If it took you eight months, if you started October one, you're a professional. I mean, you live this, right? Some of us live this on the side, but still, I mean, I don't know, I mean, Chairman, I'm sorry to throw it off, but.
Appreciate it.
I want to say one thing, Commissioner McDonald, I, I agree with everything you're saying. But I've served on planning and zoning for probably somewhere around ten years. And it hasn't changed one bit in the ten years. And if I'm not mistaken, there was somebody else that was over this at one time. Now, I agree that we need to get better at what we do, but, but what was done in the past is no different than what they're trying to do now.
Understand that, but we, we had this conversation last year, right? The whole idea of last year's conversation, conversations I had further after that was that we, that we felt the plan, that the process had worked. And I'll tell you, I was, I mean, I was director here for six years, right? But I wasn't over the C I P, right? I mean, because I'm not, it's not community development's fault, right? But, but, but there were things that, that other departments tried to do to get more information out. But, but in the end, that wasn't our role, right? Our role was to make sure y'all got to at least see it. And that's what, what Vance and Martin are trying to do, you know? At least, at least we know about it, right? And so, no, I, I mean, I mean, I understand that, that as well, but, but I'm not a staff member anymore. I'm a commissioner. And so now I have a different role and I have a different voice. And so I'm able to use that voice. And I, you know, I know what it is to be a staff member. You know, I've sat in this room many nights and spoken to this board and the council. But the job of staff is to give all the information to the board and to council and allow them to make the best recommendation and decision that they can make based on that information. And I just don't, I don't know if we, how we get to that with this process. We have, we could do half of it tonight and come back at our next meeting and still give a hundred and seven days, you know, in two weeks, at least spread it over two nights at least.
And, and in the past, and I'll tell you what we did in two thousand six to two thousand ten-ish around there was, was that, you know, we, we broke it up into two nights. Just that it was a lot of, we felt like it was a lot of volume. I don't know if we did it on purpose, or I don't know if the comments we had stimulated the, you know, they're stimulated, you know, made the need to go back and, and, and do some research and come back, you know, with the, with the, some answers to the questions we had. It is, it's a, it's a lot of volume, and I don't think it's anybody's fault in this room. It's a lot of volume. Me and with my simple brain looks at a hundred and sixty three million dollars in fiscal year twenty six and goes, well, if there's a hundred and forty thousand people in Pearland, that's, you know, I'd, I'd use my calculator, am I gonna lie? It was like eleven hundred dollars per person in the, in the city of Pearland. And it, you know, that shocks me when I hear that. So I'd like to dig in deeper, but I think with, what Commissioner McDonald's is saying is that, that opportunity kind of shifts away from us in the, in the current process.
When, when was the C I P, the dis-draft finalized? Like at some point y'all said, this is what we want to send to the commission, that we're good here. Was that last week?
Last week.
So this last week, is that like, you know, so like Friday? Like, like, I mean, I guess y'all put your packets together, you try for Thursday.
On Thursday.
Thursday. So, I mean, they were rushing it to get to us, yeah. And I would say also, I think at this point, when you have four hundred pages, give us a book. Because we get lost in the PDF, that, you know? Need, if we can flip through and make change, you know, look at and make notes.
I wanna, I wanna second both of them and, and also, I, I do live this, I, this is my industry as well. And I recognize how much effort has gone into this, and I applaud that. And I know it's not hard. And at my previous job, budget took, you know, four or five months when I was at the county, and that was just for capital projects, not for everything else that the engineer's office didn't have control over. But if, if the code, say maybe a different way, if the code requires us to comment and give suggestions on the list, and again echoing the commissioner, then the workshops should not, yes, the, the C I P workshops are there to update on the current C I P, absolutely. But to echo again what Commissioner McDonald, I think, is saying is where are our workshops if we're supposed to approve this list? It shouldn't be, we, we shouldn't be invited to a workshop. We should have our own, that you're coming to us. And we should be given time as we are trying to plan and approve development in and around these improvements. Give time to offer educated assessments or ideas to those, to those capital, to, to the C I P plan. I think, I think that's, yeah, it, it's the schedule of how it happens and whatnot. And, and I understand, there's, there's six months worth of data here. I get it. I, I understand that. But from this, from our standpoint, as we see this, it's like, oh, well, there's a C I P workshop, if you want to come to it, you can, to get extra information, when it's us that has to approve this. That, that's, that's what I find a small bit insulting. I'm expected to approve this, but yet I've had no direct communication other than Friday that, that we have this, but yet I'm supposed to approve it. I mean, where's my workshop in developing it? Oh, I can attend if I can. Well, this is what I attend. This is, this is what I do. These commissions every, every two, two weeks and then more when we have a joint commission. So, again, I, but I do want to say, I appreciate the data here, and I intend to look at it to whatever extent I can. I know it, it does take time to develop, so.
Point of order. This, this is staff's time to present, and we've interrupted that. I, I think if we want to continue with this, we need a motion to do, John, whatever you think we need to do. If that, then staff should be able to continue with their, with their report.
Okay, Commissioner interacts here. I don't doubt that there, these projects are not vital and important, but what is more important to me is the funding behind it and whether we're gonna get that out of the presentation tonight. And I think it would be helpful to have for them to come back and present in Excel, broken down by category. This is why we came up with this budget. It's mind blowing to me that the government pays three times the amount for design than in construction than what we do in public bed, and we're doing large neighborhoods, and they're so much cheaper. That, that just, this amount of money that's being charged, like, I don't understand it. So I just want to know where, as a citizen, and I pay taxes, I want to know how's that seven hundred fourteen million dollars going to impact my tax bill? Where's the money coming from? It's not whether or not all these projects are important, they're all probably very important. It's a matter of money at the end of the day. And that's really what I want to focus on and not the specifics, because I feel like, you know, engineering and drainage have identified the exact projects that need to be done, but we need, I mean, for me to feel comfortable to like, yeah, this is good, is at the end of the day, it's, where's this money coming from? Who's gonna pay it? That's what I want the focus, that's what I would like the focus to be.
I'm Lawrence. I mean, I know, yeah, we kind of blew up the public hearing aspect of it, but we don't have a set maximum or minimum time for, for presentation, right? How far off the curve are we here?
I don't know if I can tell you how far away you are from the reservation or off the curve here. I, I can say that your obligation is simply to make recommendations for what to include on the C I P. This is a list of staff recommendations. It is not your list. All of this information you do not need to have. Where if you want to know about the budget and why they're prioritizing the things that they're prioritizing, which is what I hear from the majority of you, they're gonna tell you that they could just not include any of this information, listen to the things that you think should be on the presentation, and then they can explain why these are our priority or what you're recommending may be difficult or not feasible. I mean, I, I may have it wrong, and I apologize if I do, but it seems to me that staff is making its presentation based on the thoroughfare plan that you adopted, based on the comp plan that you adopted, based on the zonings that you have changed or recommended changes to, and based on council's actions. So they're giving you a proposal, and you can say, I would rather move that up, or you can ask a question, well, what about this area over here, whatever that area might be?
I don't, I, I think we understand they're, they're making their best recommendation, right? I think the point is we don't have the, we're not given the opportunity to understand and digest that recommendation. And ultimately, it's our recommendation to count to, to the city manager or inclusion in the budget. And it's hard for us, like, I, 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 I'll take back what I said, yes. They do include where the money comes from. It's just you use all these donuts with colors and you get lost in the donuts with colors, right? Because I'm looking at the ones, donuts and colors that just say capital cost for budget year, and then you go again, and there's another donut with color that talks about funding sources. So it's just confusing. Is everything that's in the twenty twenty six that you're going over, was that all in last year's twenty twenty six?
Say it again, I'm sorry.
Is everything that you're proposing in twenty twenty six that you, is that, was that all in last year's twenty twenty six?
No, not all.
So you have changes.
We, we had to make some changes, yes, some projects, okay.
So what, I mean, my, my thought would be, if we've already looked at it and reviewed it, then hit us with the highlights, right? Capital, the current capital plan as adopted for twenty six through twenty nine is this. Besides adding twenty thirty, these are the changes, the realignment of goal or whatever, right? Needs have changed, funding sources have changed, and we want to move those around and do those. I think that would be good information to have, so we know, because a lot of this we've, we've looked at and we've reviewed, right? We, I mean, we've looked at.
So before each of the description of the detailed information on the project, there's a table that shows all the projects for each of the fiscal years?
Again, you're, you're giving us, you're talking to us about something that we got seventy two hours ago.
Okay, so if I could suggest.
A random five hundred page document, and in three days, let me ask you to, you digest it and give it back to me, right? I mean, you wouldn't like it.
So if I could suggest something, and if, and if it is allowed to, if you guys want to have some time and review the packet information, and if you'd like an Excel spreadsheet with more details, like maybe combined, because the information on the funding source is all here. I thought, we understood, I understood, maybe my mistake, that you guys wanted more, more detailed information, and I thought putting them like project by project would be helpful. But I can put in an Excel spreadsheet combining so you can see the funding in there. And then in the next meeting, between now and the next meeting, if you guys could provide me with whatever the questions you guys have reviewing the packet, then next time I come, instead of going over the whole presentation, I just focus on your questions.
I mean, from my perspective, I mean, my goal would be what's, what's, what's different, right? I mean, we, you start, we have a current C I P. We have four year, four years of that plan, you know, one year, have we done everything on it, or somebody did get pushed? And then the four years remaining, where are we? And then what's changed to that? Those are the highlights, right? I mean, the other ones, they're there, they're good. And, and then what's the new ones? Yeah, and so, I mean, I've, I've got some cool, I mean, this looks like, is it, is it SmartGov or ClearGov? Is that your budgeting tool? Because these charts look familiar, what we use. But, but yeah, I mean, it's great for presentations, but. So I don't know, Mister Chairman, I'm sorry, I've kind of hijacked your meeting. But, yeah, whatever.
I would just, I would really let, I mean, I know council is gonna get into this too. And I think I would want to know, like, looking at an Excel spreadsheet, you have drainage and all the drainage projects, how much each one costs, how much money we have for it now, how much money we need left, where we're getting the money, if we don't get it there, what is another source? How much that might affect the, the citizens, I guess? Do we need to do another bond? I would just like to see it all laid out, because I think that all of these projects are needed and important. But I just want to know what's the impact, what's the impact to us as citizens that seven hundred fourteen million dollars we're coming from in five years? Maybe, maybe City of Pearland collects that much in tax revenue? Maybe, maybe city of Pearland collects that much in tax revenue? I don't know, because I don't, I don't see that magic spreadsheet, but I'm a numbers person, as a business owner, I just wanna see the numbers, I wanna see where it's coming from, where am I gonna have to go get the money from? Uh, you know, and I wish I knew, what does Pearland do to try to get costs down? I mean, like, public bid, I mean, just, it just, it seems like the costs are really high, so, higher than a private developer who goes and does the same thing, it seems like it's four times the amount. I, I just, as a citizen, I wanna know, are we just allowing people to charge whatever they want, or what's the process here?
I, I mean, I'm, I'm sure there's a bidding process similar to a mud or, or what have you. You guys are, you guys are soliciting bids, and maybe you can discuss that next time. I, what I'm hearing is, we need more time to, to absorb the information. Um, there are times that, that capital improvements has come to us, the board, and said, you know, we're kind of in a hurry, and you could, you could sense the, that they're in a hurry. I'm, I'm not sensing that at this time. Um, can we have two weeks? I, I'm seeing you smile like, yes, we're in a hurry, can we have two, can we come back in two weeks? And those that are passionate can spend as much time as they want in the next two weeks, and then we can, we can reconvene?
Yes, I, what I would like to do, if it's okay, I'll provide the spreadsheet that you guys are asking for, and then, uh, I'll see if I can, uh, prepare there by this week so I could submit it to you, and then next week, you submit the questions in advance, so I have, so instead of like having a very long meeting, we, I just come already prepared with the answers to your questions.
To submit, um, our questions or what we'd like to see to Martin, Martin can put that together and get it to engineering, and then maybe, and obviously certainly they can get it, I mean, a lot of it's gonna probably be stuff that they've done for, for council, I mean, they've got four workshops worth of material that they've done, and so they could be able to draw from some of that, um, and maybe they can get that to us, you know, a few days earlier as well, but in a, in a digestible manner that when we're looking at it, at the three hundredth page, we're not glazed over, there's not three hundred pages, that'd be even better, you know, so.
I, I mean, some of my questions are, were simple, and, and I, just what Commissioner Hendricks said, uh, you know, for example, DR two five oh two, that was, I think, the Fight Road, um, the design cost seemed to be twenty-five percent of the construction cost, which I found to be, um, just, just over the top, I guess, but that could be-
A little higher than industry standard.
What?
It's a little higher than an industry standard.
Right, and so, but I think you mentioned then, Tex Dot, um, was doing something to the road, so is there, is that, is that cost higher because of the prior work that you now have to take and incorporate, et cetera, et cetera? Um, but, but no reason to answer it now, I'm just saying that, that's one of those things that, that popped up in my head, kinda the irregular things that you guys even maybe found or find, uh, um, different and may need to clarify, kinda thing. But the other thing, I, I think Commissioner Haskins mentioned, uh, you know, maybe, maybe the idea next year is a quarterly update, but I think what helps us is when we have a lot of information, to get it ahead of time instead of the three days that I've heard is the, is, it seems to be the prevailing issue, maybe, maybe we get it before the first, um, the first meeting of the month, but we don't discuss it until the s- next meeting of the month, and Martin at one point gave us a UDC thing and says, hey, you guys, you got homework, uh, you know, which drove the point home, right? That, that we got some outside work to do, and so, you know, for me, I allotted X amount of hours ahead of time, um, you know, to, 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 to give it the, the studying it needed, and I think that's what I'm hearing, is that, that we need that, if that makes any sense.
If the charity didn't obtain a motion, I make a motion that we postpone this until staff gives us more information spreadsheet as, uh, several of our commissioners asked for, and, uh, to our next meeting, postpone to the next meeting.
I second that.
And Chair, if I may, uh, just a little point of privilege here, um, as discussed, y'all do have the ninety-day kinda shot clock to go by on this, um, June sixteenth is within that shot clock, so your next meeting, uh, would be able to be, to meet that.
Fantastic, just adds a little bit more stress over there. Um, all right, we have a motion and a second on the floor, if there's no further discussion, then all those in favor to postpone until the next meeting and after we get the spreadsheet, uh, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand, uh, measure passes seven zero. I thought it was fantastic work. Um, that brings us to city council update.
All right, uh, just two items that were, uh, previously on the May nineteenth, uh, city council agenda, uh, the first of which was that zone change, uh, for eighty-two-ten McCard Road, uh, that was the townhome development that was going to be a, a planned development for, uh, apartment slash build to rent, um, that y'all had, like, thirty different people that came out for, um, just, you know, giving you some kinda contextual, uh, things there. Um, there were discussion about the site plan, surrounding neighborhood, character, traffic, use, um, all of that said, uh, due to the public comment that was provided, uh, at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, uh, it did end up needing the supermajority vote to pass, uh, and it failed to reach that supermajority threshold, uh, with a four to three vote, uh, so it did not, uh, end up gaining favorable traction. Um, then we had the, uh, discount tire addition, uh, that y'all saw, uh, that same night, uh, that, uh, did get approved, uh, with a seven to zero vote. So with that, uh, that leaves you with the community development roundup as trademarked.
Turn the mic on, that brings us to the city council and P and Z workshop on June ninth, um, does anyone know that they cannot be here? We have, we have one that's a no, and a couple of, uh, have to check, I have to check, yeah. Um, Commissioner Eisenberg and I have no life, so we'll probably be here on the night. Um, next P and Z regular meeting is June sixteenth, same question, does anybody know that they cannot be here?
I have no life. Well, that's true.
All right, if that's it, uh, I mean, nothing further, it is eight twenty-seven, let's call this meeting to end.